I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome you to the December 21st meeting of the Bryan City Board of Education. Let's begin with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all of us who are in attendance, as well as our viewers. And we're going to begin with roll call.
Emily Eball.
Here.
Sandra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Glenn Uckel.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, fellow board members, you have in front of you the minutes to the previous meeting that was held in November. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they have been submitted? If not, may I have a motion to approve them? Moved by Emily is her second. Seconded by Tom. Rob, please call the roll.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian, Upstate. Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I'm not aware of any participations. Is there anything from the BDA? Okay. We'll move on into communications then for the four-counting report. Sandra?
Good evening. Very quiet as the rest of schools. We just had board last Thursday night and going into a program tomorrow morning being put on by the preschoolers. Other than that, they had a wonderful Christmas for kids and collection. And everybody was looking forward to going home for Christmas break, as what we were told. So I'm sure that's all true as all students are.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
A little bit of the treasurer's report now. Rob?
Thank you. Let's start by looking at our financial reports. First of all, the cash reconciliation report for the month ended November 30th, 2015. At Farmers and Merchants Bank, deposits totaled $13,070,267. Our outstanding checks and adjustments, $269,022. Deposits at Star Ohio, $3,233,696. At Morgan Stanley, $34,682,769. And at State Bank, $4,8721. Petty cash and change funds totaled $7,750. Total deposits on hand at November 30th, $54,733,618. Of those funds, our general fund balance was $11,808,000. Our bond improvement, bond and retirement fund was $1,252,599. Permanent improvement fund, $2,338,99. Our locally funded initiative funds for a construction project totaled $3,201,572. Our local share of our construction funds balance was $30,126,880. And our state share of the project construction fund balance was $5,171,268. Once again, total funds on hand, $54,733,780. Our SM2 report, our revenues for the period are $132,801. Over budget and our expenses are $153,070. Under budget, we have a positive variance at this point in time at the end of November, $285,870. Any questions on those reports? If not, we will continue on and look at the appropriations. Our amended appropriation in total is $25,700,294. Changes during the month included a middle school principal fund increase of $4,700. District managed activities, the athletic department, an increase of $801. And the choir, an increase of $3,000. Our permanent fund, an increase of $138,027. Our building project LFI fund, an increase of $60,467. Our building project, state local share, an increase of $63,973. Our tournament fund, an increase of $985. And the FCC LA student activity fund, an increase of $4,000. Total increases for the month of November, $275,953. Any questions? If not, we will move on. I'd like the board to approve a resolution to advertise and receive bids for a one-nine passenger bus. We are part of Metropolitan Education Council Cooperative Purchasing Program. And this organization has already bid these buses. We're going to work with them. They've already got the bids on these buses. We're going to work with them to purchase this through a cooperative purchasing organization this time. A little bit different practice than in the past, but still provides us the assurance that we've gone through the proper bidding procedures as outlined by the state of Ohio and still get the unit at the lowest price possible for a school.
You can save more money by doing that?
Yes.
Good.
Also, next month, we will have our organizational and regular meeting by statute. This must take place prior to January 15th of 2016. We need to set that date. And also, the board will need to appoint a president pro temp to handle the organizational meeting.
Okay, for that date, would January 11th, Monday, work for everyone? What are your pick?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And...
Only if you promise to bring a birthday cake for me, though.
Is it your birthday?
It is my birthday.
Tom said he'd say.
All right.
I'll bring the candle.
I'm going to be waiting a while.
Okay. So, President Pro Temp, is there a nominee for that? Or am I just a second?
Let's do a nomination, please.
Is your nomination for President Pro Temp?
I'd like to nominate Glenn as President Pro Temp for our organizational meeting.
Is your second?
My second.
Seconded by Tom. Please call the roll.
This will be the roll call for the other resolution for the buses as well.
As well?
As well.
Okay, we'll do it then?
We're going to cover both with one.
We'll do it all in one, both then?
If that's fine with you.
Yes.
Tom Lingby?
Yes.
Brian Miller?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily Eball?
Yes.
Sandra Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, a couple of personnel recommendations. Hire some temporary student workers. Parker Ruffer, Tori Savage, and Scott Whistler as part-time custodial students be paid at... Part-time custodial workers will be paid a minimum wage. And also substitute classified employee Tori Savage to help with custodial work.
Thank you. Is there a motion supporting the personnel recommendations? Move by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ryan.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Moving on, we're going to old business right now. Obviously, there's a lot of construction going on at our site. A lot of excitement going on there. A lot of progress is being made. Tom, or Diana, or Rob, anyone want to chime in and fill us in with some of the updates of what's happening out there?
I'll start, and then you can fill in, Tom.
All right, that sounds like a great plan.
Okay, so Rob and I took a tour of the site last Friday. We're happy to report that the first floor of the academic wing, they're starting to put up the metal studs. So you can start to see the definition of where the rooms will be located, hallways, restrooms, et cetera. They have probably about 50% or close to 50% of the first floor of the academic wing finished. They're getting ready to pour the floor in the gymnasium. I believe that pour will happen tomorrow so that it can cure over the holiday week coming up. And then they're getting ready to pour the second floor cement on the academic wing Wednesday so that that also can cure over the long holiday weekend. The roofing is going well. The steel ran into a little trouble today with the weather. So we had to suspend operations today, but the steel is going in. And right behind that is the decking. And again, we're about... The gymnasium has ceiling decking, the music area, and some of the cafeteria. And then approximately about 50% of the academic wing as well is done and complete. The brick is starting to arrive on site. So once the masons finish with the blocking and we get prepared, they'll be ready to start doing the exterior brick. And then that's the extent of mine. And Rob and Tom, if I missed something critical, please fill in.
You covered it pretty well.
I think you covered it real well.
So, very exciting, very exciting.
No doubt the weather that we've had this fall has really aided in allowing them to catch up
Has certainly helped us, yes.
and get things back on track. And even though it's still difficult for me to comprehend that that building is going to be ready within the next year here, it's going to come together. I know it starts moving quickly, and they're making good progress.
One thing that I think is worth noting, just last week, they were able to put temporary heat into the building. So the gymnasium is now being heated. And they're putting heat into the first level of the academic wings, A and B. As they continue to get the windows closed up temporarily, they'll keep pushing the heated portion of the building more to the west. And as the roof gets completed above, they obviously will put heat into that. Once you have a roof to where they can put heat in them, it's, you know, really, they're off to the races in terms of running the electrical conduit, you know, all of the internal workings of the building. Because setting the studs, as, you know, I know Diana Robinson went into the building often. I mean, that happens awful, awful quick. So getting the building secured to the weather, roof on the buildings, windows temporary enclosures on them, and putting the heat in them, really, you're in position to actually start moving into the phases that allow you to start pushing for completion.
Things are really going to start to happen.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of work outside with the masonry, with the brick. But they're going to, you know, put up temporary enclosures for all those, you know, put the scaffold up and drake bisque lean around the outside of the scaffold and heat those areas. So they'll be laying brick pretty much all winter. And they'll be laying brick in the spring, and they'll be laying brick probably in the summer. But the rest of the building can continue on to the finishing phases. So there is a lot going on. There truly is. And I am genuinely impressed with the overall competency of the people on the project. My observation is they seem to be working reasonably well together, you know, solving problems, working through problems, working around problems. There's always something that isn't in the right place at the right time, but they continue to manage through those issues. So, I mean, I'm personally just tickled to death with, you know, what we have as a team in terms of building the project.
Thank you very much. Rob, anything else you want to say?
I'm just going to add that they're working hard on the mechanical room to get that ready so that, you know, they can start adding some of the major mechanical units to the building. And that's kind of the heart of the building there. It pumps the services out to the rest of the facility. So they're anxious to get those areas buttoned up so they can run, you know, the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, ductwork, and, you know, and all the water and plumbing and everything that comes out of that mechanical room to the rest of the building. So they're working hard, and they've actually redesigned it. Just started to get some structural steel. They put structural steel in place where some masonry is going to be so that they can move forward faster. And they were able to obtain that steel quickly. The supplier's able to get it to us quickly. And they've set that, and it's going to expedite that area as well.
Very good. Yeah, it's just great to see the progress that's being made on the project. Okay, moving along in new business. Again, just as a reminder, next month, we'll be beginning a new year, fresh beginning. We'll be having our organizational meeting before the regularly scheduled meeting next month. At that meeting, we will be electing board officers. The oath of office will be administered to the board members who were re-elected. Service fund will be established. Board committee assignments will be appointed. We will be seeing their meeting schedule for 2016. And we will take into consideration the opportunity to be part of the Ohio School Board Association for Leadership. And with that, we will move into the superintendent's recommendations. Diana?
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have approval of an overnight trip for our high school bowling team. This was actually held on December 5th. I'm asking for approval in retrospect. The bowling team, as you, a few months ago, approved them as a varsity sport. And so we want to support them and their endeavors. And they've got not so great start. But I would like the board to formally approve their overnight stay. Next, you have a resolution to increase the substitute teacher rate of pay to $100 per day or $50 per half-day effective January 4th. This is a resolution. We've had a couple of schools in Williams County that have increased their substitute rate of pay. Substitutes at all levels, teaching, custodial aides, food service, are... We're running into shortages. And we're doing our best to recruit. We did a social media campaign where we got some new recruits at all levels. We've advertised in the newspapers. We've advertised with other schools through the ESC. There's just right now a shortage because many of the teachers who were on the sub-list were hired due to the incredible number of retirements that Williams County and other surrounding counties had last year. So we're working through that, but we don't want to continue to fall behind. So we would like to recommend that increase effective when we come back from break. Questions on those?
Is there a motion supporting the approval of the overnight trip, as well as the resolution? Move by Emily, is there a second?
My second.
Seconded by Tom. Please call the roll.
Glenn?
That will abstain.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yep.
Next, we have two annual approvals. One is for our... It's typically our high school guidance handbook, but because of the transition to our new secondary education, we're using it as a six-to-12 curriculum guide for the 2016-2017 school year. Our administrative team, our guidance counselors, and our teachers have been hard at work looking at revisions and changes with the upcoming move to the new building. So I just want to highlight a few of those changes for the board tonight. At sixth grade, we're going to be adding choir as an elective for sixth graders. That'll be new. And it'll expand our music department down into sixth grade and give them another choice. We are going to focus on art, health, PE, and technology at that grade level for our specialists. And we're going to have students who show signs or have proven themselves in the classroom that can excel and begin to take pre-algebra or even seventh-grade English if that's their strong area. At seventh grade, we're going to offer an accelerated science option. We're going to add extensions to language arts and math. And we're going to give them more time to teach reading and math at those levels. All students will get a full year of fine art, which is a state requirement. And we're going to add a class called Career Exploration, which is in line with the push from the state for students to be college and career ready. But it will also expose them to some of those life skills that are very important. Things like personal finance, credit card usage, lease agreements, rental agreements. So that will be offered at the seventh grade. At eighth grade, we're going to offer physical science for high school credit for those students who excel. We're going to add... Currently offer Spanish as an option, but only as an early bird. We're going to add that throughout the entire day. We're going to offer health and PE for high school credit. We have additional electives for our students, for eighth graders who are not necessarily in the music area. Some of our eighth grade students who want to focus on music will be given an option to have an instrumental and a vocal if they choose to do so. High school, we are switching physical science and biological science because this is more aligned with the state model curriculum. We are probably one of the only schools that still teaches biology to freshmen. So we're going to make that switch next year and make that correction. We're going to offer, once again, honors English at the freshman and sophomore levels. Oral communications and phys ed will be required during their ninth grade year. Again, this is going to help out four-county because in response to... We're one of the very few schools who do not make that requirement. So students will be prepared if they choose that route for their junior and senior years. We're going to be offering project-based classes in chemistry, Algebra II, and English 11. We have some new electives, as well as a new VCT Visual Communications and Technology course. This is a course that is being developed that will focus on school, social media, the yearbook, and other student communications such as live announcements. So we're very excited about the changes that are happening in the curriculum, things that are coming together. The next step, once the board approves the handbook, is it will be distributed to students when they come back. And now, it'll be... The choices will be in the students' hands. So demand will dictate what we do offer and what we have to wait and do some more development work on.
What's the minimum number that you would entertain having a class for students?
We typically set that number at 15.
So if there's not 15, generally, it's between...
Generally, sometimes we run a class with 12 because once we find at the beginning of the year, there are students who drop and want to add. And if we don't have some of those electives available, there's nothing for them to add. So generally, our number is 15. Other questions? And then the next approval is the athletic handbook for 2016-17. This looks at more... We cleaned up some grammar, some spelling errors. And we also did some changes to referring to the administration or the athletic director. So we cleaned up that language. And there were two other changes. One in the... With dealing with the drug and alcohol policy. We clarified that a student cannot serve a suspension and, for example, a first suspension and a second suspension at the same time period. Those are meant to run concurrently, not consecutively. So we cleaned that language up. And we also clarified some of the awards that will be given. So questions on the athletic handbook?
I'm sorry. Say it again. The suspension...
The suspension cannot run consecutively. In other words...
It doesn't run one right after another?
Not the way it's currently working.
Okay, so we're going to change that.
We're going to change that so it will. So a student...
I just wanted to clarify that.
So a student that has a first offense will serve that entire first offense.
And then the second offense suspension will begin.
And then the second offense suspension will begin. Correct.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, is there a motion supporting the additional administrative recommendations? Move by Emily, a second, please?
My second.
Seconded by Sandra.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Under commendations, we have our Hobie Leadership Award of Dassers, Isaac Bowers and Race Ballmer, along with our alternate Zach Novas. We'd like to congratulate our varsity academic team members for a second-place finish in the varsity tournament. And we have our student actions, Students of Action for Responsibility, as well as our Kiwanis Students of the Month, Robert Kimball and Mason King. Beginning in our middle school, we'd like to recognize Ike's Top Dogs for grades four and five for Responsibility. Our fifth grade Corn Belt Quiz Bowl team placed 13th among teams from Illinois, Indiana, Missouri, and Ohio. Our sixth grade Corn Belt Quiz Bowl team placed fifth among those teams from those same states. We'd like to recognize our Students of Action of Responsibility in grades six, seven, and eight. At Lincoln Elementary, we have our Character Trait Student Commendations, again, for Responsibility. Same at Washington Elementary. And then we have our PE Gold Slip winners at Washington and Lincoln, Nicolette Stickney, Kalen Magg, and Madison Sines. So those are our commendations this month.
Thank you. We'll just see all that follow. Is there a motion supporting the commendations for the month?
So moved.
Moved by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Emily.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Under personnel recommendations, it is with deep regret that we accept the following resignations. Scott Ward, Director of Elementary Education, effective July 31st, 2016. Joel Johnston, Middle School Custodian, effective November 23rd, 2015. Bob Koffenstein, Central Arts and Ed Head Custodian, effective December 4th, 2015. And Joy Richmond, Grade One Intervention Teacher, effective December 10th, 2015. Bob, Joy, and Scott, and Joel, all have decided to leave our district to pursue other opportunities. And we wish them the best in their endeavors and with their new positions. Higher classified staff. Jacob Robb, Second Ship Middle School Custodian, zero years experience, eight hours per day, 260 days per year, effective December 21st. Jennifer Deech, Preschool One-on-One Aid, zero years experience, three hours per day, four days per week, effective January 5th, 2016. For St. Pat's, through Auxiliary Services Personnel, I'm recommending Stephanie Lamore, Accounting Clerk, not to exceed 45 hours at minimum wage during the remainder of the 2015-16 school year, effective January 6th of 2016. Transfer of Kristoff to our Central Arts and Ed Head Custodian, effective December 7th. And an involuntary transfer of Bridget Smith to Lincoln, One-on-One Aid, 6.75 hours per day, effective December 10th. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we are still continually looking for new substitutes. So we do have some names to add to our list in both classified and as teachers. But I will take a moment to put in a plug. If there is anyone interested that would like to substitute at any level, to please contact our office.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion supporting the personnel recommendations for the month?
So moved.
Moved by Ryan?
My second.
Seconded by Sandra.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tonight is our first reading of board policy updates. These policy updates are recommended from Miola for a quarterly update. A summary was sent to each board member with each of the policies listed. Tonight, we will not vote. This is just the first reading. But if there are any questions regarding these policies, I'd be glad to address them. Under Points of Information, a few weeks ago, I was in Columbus with Dr. Ross for his final superintendent's quorum. And we do have some updates coming out of Columbus for ODE. First of all, the report card release, they're... It will be released in two phases. The first phase will be released on January 14th. And this will include the graduation rate, the K-3 reading score, and the Ready for Success. The Ready for Success, or the Prepared for Success, will not have a letter grade attached to it at this time. That will not be graded until 2016. In February, they will release the test data. There are some schools that are releasing their test data. And we have sent our parent scores home, or our student scores home to the parents. But they are still going through and cleaning up the data. And we are very close in two of our areas. So we're going to wait until we hear that those scores are finalized before we release our general statistics on the passage rate. But we're very happy with where we are right now in our preliminary data. And that February release will also include not only student performance, but also student participation. The federal government just released the new ESSA law. There is a very quick turnaround for the state of Ohio to get this information processed and out to us. So they said to stay tuned for that. The testing windows, they clarified some of the testing windows for the upcoming Ohio Air Test. So testing has not gone away. It's just changed to a new vendor. They're also looking at adding additional options and additional criteria to the honors diploma. And then finally, they have... There has been a truancy bill, House Bill 410, that was just introduced right before the Christmas break that they want us to keep a close eye on. This could impact students who are habitually truant from school and give us some strategies on how to deal with those students. So questions out of news from Columbus? They have appointed an interim state superintendent, Lonnie Rivera, who was formerly superintendent at Oregon City Schools. So he has also some Northwest Ohio ties. And I've known Lonnie... I've gotten to know him over the past few years, again, fairly well. But have started making some connections already. making some connections already, so looking forward to see where ODE takes us next.
Okay.
And then, we have board meeting dates. As you stated earlier, we've set the January board meeting for January eleventh. That will be the organizational meeting first, followed by the regular meeting. The Business Advisory Committee will meet on June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. LPDC will meet February fourth, two thousand sixteen.
Should that be March for the Business Advisory?
You know what, I bet it is March, 'cause we should have a first quarter meeting. And Emily, what was your question?
Same thing, did you?
Same to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I need order to...
All right, so we will fix that. Business Advisory, March fourteenth, LPDC, February fourth. And then, as a Merry Christmas present, we excused our administrators from tonight's meeting, so that they could begin celebrating with their families. So, they send their well wishes and Merry Christmas and a big thank you to the board.
Thank you. I know it has been a very busy time of the year in the schools to finish out the testing and all the Christmas programs and all the hard work that they went in preparing for that, and we have a lot of athletic events going on, tournaments during this time as well, too, so it is still a busy time for us.
Yes.
But as a busy time of the year, we've come to the end of two thousand fifteen, and we approach this holiday season, I do hope that everyone in our community takes time to spend time with their family and enjoy the season, and I guess, I don't know what else to say, it's gonna be a very unique year from two thousand fifteen. We faced a lot of challenges, a lot of neat things are happening, though, with the construction of the new building, and we will look forward to see what two thousand sixteen brings. We do have need to go into executive session, though, under item A, under the employment, appointment of employment dismissal, dismissal promotion, motion of compensation of employee. No action is anticipated at this time, but could I have a motion to go into executive session for the stated reason?
So moved.
Moved by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Emily, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We see you again in January. Thank you.